We're gonna go ahead and get started, ladies and gentlemen. This is a work session for the Commissioner of Pickens County. Everybody has got an agenda. If they don't have, their agenda's on the table up here. And we're gonna be real quick. I've got a lot of my department heads here. I know some of y'all gotta get back out, check the roads. It's raining. It's beating us up pretty good. But I'm number one on the agenda is department updates. And Kim, since you've been drafted and sitting up front, I'm gonna go ahead and get you over the roads. Go ahead.
During the month of July, the Road Department has paved Stevens View Road, Deer Chase Drive, Griffith Road, and Tacon Way. We were scheduled to pave Jordan Road this week and it kinda rained down. Johnson Paving, who is under L-MeG contract, they're about sixty-five percent complete. They still like Hydras, Mofflenburg Lane, Eaton Road, and then the other drive and all that area over there off South Main Street.
Okay.
So they're about sixty-five percent, but they'll be back in here in a couple of weeks to complete their L-MeG.
You having any equipment issues? Everything working so far?
Yeah.
So good? How's the, for a quick update, how's the roads doing with all this rain we've had?
We had one temporary road closure yesterday over Middle Springs. We've got a few minor washouts, but nothing major.
And you got to, I'm assuming the guys are checking out all the covers and all to be sure debris hadn't got blocked up anymore, fine?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else you got?
Yeah, we've had to, had a lot of trees down this spring due to the storms and everything. We cleaned up ninety-five trees in the past couple of weeks. It's been down on the right way due to the storms. So got all those taken care of. The, all the roads that are being serviced as strikers should be in here next week. Get started on the striping. We're still behind like everybody else due to rain and everything. But they should be here next week.
Okay.
And start striping those roads.
Y'all got any questions for Mr. Clinton?
Good job, as always.
Ms. Faith?
Yes, sir.
What, anything?
It's quiet on that one.
Quiet on that one, I'm sure.
Thank you. I'm just gonna try to start on getting the budget for next year together this month. And maybe get y'all to report on that so we can get a proper to have our budget.
You seeing any, you seeing any look out for the next thirty-four months? Seeing any increases in the budgets for this coming year?
I hope not. I'm gonna ask them to try to keep it at the same level at this year because...
You're talking about them as our department head? Them just like officials?
Everyone.
Okay.
We're gonna ask them to see what they do. I know I've talked to Roy and I think the tax digest is gonna be, values have gone up quite a bit, but for us to not have a tax increase, we'll have to roll back the military. So I don't think we want to do a tax increase right now. So I think we can hold the budgets down so that we can keep the revenues about the same.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Faith? All right. Jim, I know we don't see you much, can you keep it within thirty seconds on what you got going on?
Probably fifteen.
All right.
We've just basically been getting a lot of dumping calls, still a lot of illegal dumping. Fortunately, it's Kim over at the Road Department, they've been able to help us clean up quite a bit of it. When I find the people that do it, they get a citation as well if I make them clean it up. But Sheriff's Department, they've kinda got to where they don't wanna do a lot of the road cleanup anymore, so I kinda depend on Kim over at the Road Department, and he can work very well with me. But other than that, we're starting to buckle down on trying to collect some of the illegal, not illegal, but the taxes, that's delinquent. So we're working on that. Right now, we're kinda pushing that issue right now to try to get some of the people that hadn't paid their taxes and getting those tax monies in.
All right.
Sorry, I was thinking about thirty-five seconds.
You did. All right. Rodney, you got any whitewashing decrees?
Fortunately, yes. The landfill repairs were made to it Monday, and we're anxiously awaiting the first report coming out of that to see if there's corrections made to it or gonna help with the numbers that are coming out.
So they doing this once a month or still once a quarter?
They're still once a month until we can get the numbers down below the state requirements. Once they get down below the requirements, then we can go back to once a quarter.
Okay. All right. Ms. Paula?
Right now, in Alston, in his role as safety coordinator, he's working on getting the safety action plan together, which we have to turn in by September of this thing, and that will give us the final requirements to get our seven and a half percent discount on our workers' comp. And we hope to have that completed in time to come through the meeting this month. And as far as anything else we're looking at right now, I've talked to our broker about our insurance, and he hasn't got enough numbers in, not how to give us any concrete information, but he did say that Cigna is already asking for our data, so we're gonna have several, you know, to look at, several options.
All right. That's for hospitalization or that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Mr. Nicholson, EOC?
Well, we're fortunate, things didn't get bad enough for us to operate the EOC last night. We have finished up with the storm Irma last fall, signed up all the papers. FEMA has signed up on their part. Now we're waiting on the check to Kankunfujima. It'll be a little over a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars we should be reimbursing.
Any other things you got brewing out there?
Not at this time. We've had quite a bit of training this month, people, our people as well as the surrounding areas. I mean, we had people in that class history from as far as Catoosa, Ringgold and all that. So they're really taking advantage of the training we're offering.
All right. Have y'all got, y'all got any questions? Okay.
They're doing such a good job.
And Phil's is really working with the website and all that, so we're keeping the public informed a bit.
Okay. Phillip, Water Department?
Uh, we're done with John's Mountain with the exception of getting it filled. We got it filled up, but we're having to flush it in increments, so it's gonna take us a little while to get it flushed out, but once we do, we'll be ready to go. We got a meter that we done set up there, but she's not hooked up till we get done. Talked with Gary McBay at Yummer County last week, I think it was, and they've got their pipe in. Their...
They're pipe in, they're pipe in on the site, not pop in in the ground?
Yeah, no, it's onsite. They're anytime gonna start putting it in, and they're gonna have a crew, I think they're contracting it out of a thing, but they're gonna be up there till they get done. We installed ten meters in July. That puts us up to the year to forty-five, so we're catching up to where we was at for the whole year last year. We got a pretty big project that DOT is fixing to kick up, I think the lead date's sometime in September up in Marble Hill for the passing lane. They're gonna have to relocate sixty-five hundred foot eight inch line. That's from Four Mile Church Road to the intersection of Wilkie Road. They're redoing that whole intersection and so the DOT, they'll put that out for bid and they'll hire a contractor to come in and do that. Got an update on Grandview? I talked with Chris, well, he emailed me. The plant site and the tank site, they're still working on the property as we talked last week, but the topo surveys and all that's been pretty much completed, but we've just gotta get a little bit more property for the plant and our sludge pond. And we're still debating on whether to go with a, with their, you know, a used plant or to buy a new plant, so he's still working on that. And the design, the distribution part of it, they're about fifty percent done with plans. So in a couple of weeks, he said that we'll be sitting down and having a thirty, he called it a thirty percent review, where we sit down and look at the plans and see which way we need to go from there.
Okay. All right. Any major leakages, any breaks you've had?
We've had a couple, but they've been small, so it's not been, knock on wood. They've just been small weeks, ain't been blowouts yet.
Okay. Tucker, Mr. Green?
Everything's going pretty good. We noticed this summer, we've really tried to increase notifying the public about when we're gonna be paving roads, working with Kim a lot about getting stuff out on social media and sending out code written warnings through these storms and stuff over the summer, and a lot of calls have died down. People have, you know, couldn't get notified ahead of time. That's been working with us, so we just hope to keep the public as informed as we can.
All right. Mr. Sloan, Mr. Elrod back there?
Fire Officer's Office been doing a lot of the school inspections.
Liam, it's Dan, let me see your...
Um, we've been working on the school inspections. We tried to get them done before school started, but due to a lot of the building around the schools, it wasn't worth our time to kinda go in and before they were ready to open the doors, so there was a lot of stuff that would've been kicked back. That's been going well. We still don't really have them all done. We've got three more schools we've gotta do, but that's been going pretty smooth. Station twelve, they should start the framing on the inside. They wanted to get started last week, I'm not sure what pushed them off, but hopefully sometime this week, 'cause they've got it right in, they're ready to go, the lumber's there, so they're just ready to get started with it. I have spoke with Phillip about some of the drainage issues that we've had at Grandview Station. They're at the corner of Grandview and Murk Mountain, so we're gonna work through those. Hopefully, I think we're looking at going up there maybe next week and doing a little bit with it and Kim's guys or whoever. Met with the guys as far as the new pumppers that we're getting. Should, give me a pretty broad spectrum of the date, but he's looking at November, between November tenth and December the sixth of this year, having both of the pumppers in. The tankers, we're looking for the three thousand gallon tankers, one in December and one in January. So, for Fay and y'all.
Have you got any updates on your assemblies, the two you're gonna swap out?
They've been pretty difficult working with them so far, so I, to be fair with you and everybody that's here, I basically told them if I need to open this back up and rebid, we'll do it, but I need, I need to get going, so...
Are these, these remounts, we do a three turnover remount. You know, you pull the boxes off three times, and the fourth time we scrap it out. Do we need to go with a two turnover remount? I know that'll run the price up over a period of time, or are we getting by with the three turnover remount?
So far, so far that's been working well, so...
Have any issues with the remount on the third time?
Well, we've not made it the third time yet.
Okay.
'Cause we do two a year, we've got the eight assemblies. We do two a year. So basically, you're looking at twelve years before we'll know. You're looking at eight more years.
I just wanted to be sure you monitor the boxes to the fact that I don't wanna go to a third mount if the boxes are in that bad a disrepair.
Right. Well, and that's, that's part of what they do. I mean, with the remount, that's the one thing they do, they take the box off and completely redo it, the inside and all that. So basically, they're talking about the framework underneath, but everything's, everything's looking good after the ones that we have taken off in the past, they're looking good, so...
Sloan, how close is the second bid to the guy, the people that are being difficult on that?
Don't hold me to it, but I think it was like sixty-five hundred dollars. Is that right, Faith? I think it was sixty-five hundred dollars, and that company was the one that had been doing it previous, but I, you know...
What do they give you some issues about, starting time, completion time?
Yeah, I think we've probably had our pre-bid meeting or any of that.
Six or eight.
I can't get them in here, that's what, I don't know. Like I say, I told them last week, you know, if I need to reopen it up, we'll reopen it up for bid and we'll go again.
This would be an attorney question. What, what's our time? How long do we have to wait until we wave the white flag and put it up for bids again?
We pull it out and look at it.
All right. We've got a, we've got a regular meeting coming up, our official meeting in two weeks.
I hate that name.
Me and Phil take a look at it, and I'm sure we'll make him, get Lisa to send stuff to Becky and Jerry here, and see what we gotta do. If they keep, if they keep being, if we're expecting them to do our work, we can't get them in here to give us a thing, we need to relook at it.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, as far as the PO work and all's been, been done, I mean, they've got our PO number. I don't know.
All right. Thank you. Richard, I think you're, there you are. I didn't mean to oversee you. What you got going on, banging development real quick?
Permits and licenses been steady. We've got a couple of rezonings and a conditional use case for Planning Commission Monday, August thirteenth at six o'clock. So if anybody hears about any of the zoning related cases and wants to just listen or speak for or against, that's the time, that public hearing, again, August thirteenth at six o'clock, right in here at this room for Planning Commission. At the airport, building permits were recently issued for two new T-hangers, and things have been going well.
All right. Recreation, Mr. Jones?
So we just got finished with summer camp. Been running summer camp since school let out for the most part, so the end of May through last Friday. Average about sixty kids per day for summer camp. It went just about as well it could possibly go for summer camp. Along with that, we've had the pool running at about the same time period due to staffing issues, which is about what happens every single year. We'll be closing the pool this coming Sunday. Most of our lifeguards are in college or in high school, and we won't be able to staff the pool, so we'll be closing it this coming Sunday. Once that's over with, we are getting everything cleaned from summer camp, and then we'll be getting ready for basketball season coming into fall, getting registration out to the kids. We're sending flyers out to every single child in middle school down to elementary school for basketball.
Are you gonna, you gonna drain the pool right away or the school system?
We'll have to let the chemicals die down for the most part, and then we'll end up draining it.
Okay.
But nobody with a school system has contacted us about keeping it opening longer.
All right, so they're not doing any more tournaments right there, any swim meets or anything?
As far as I know, no, sir.
Okay.
So, but basketball will be our next big sport, and we're doing registration for it. Skills evaluation and draft will be in October, and we'll start playing games in December.
The PA system in the, in the community room there, the representative's kinda crashed out.
Yes, sir.
You had talked to me a little Wednesday about that. I'd given verbal to go ahead and get that thing replaced. Have you put, run us any numbers on that?
Well, for those of you who don't know, we have got a new sponsor down at the Recreation Department. Marcos Pizza has come down there and has basically become a sponsor for us. What they done, we put signs in the gymnasium and signs in the ball field and one side of the pool, and they've gave us a thousand dollars. Four hundred of that went to a house account for pizzas, like for summer camp that we just had our party on Friday. The other six hundred dollars we're gonna use is for the PA system. We'll probably take and probably go to K Reese's and get a plaque made, that's been donated by Marcos Pizza, so we'll be able to get a PA system without having to come from our budget, so it's gonna be very nice.
Okay, is it the podium PA or what?
Yes, sir. It's gonna be all built into one. The microphone's actually attached, so we don't have to scramble around, try to find a microphone for Rotary or whoever rents the building.
Okay.
So it'd be nice.
I have a question, Ryan.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, the children that were coming across the road for after school?
Yes, ma'am.
Did they typically go to the Boys and Girls Club now?
Yes, ma'am. Since we instituted that policy two years ago? Two years ago, anybody who's coming across from the junior high is gonna be Boys and Girls Club affiliated. We got to the point that we're being inundated with middle schoolers who are being unsupervised in our park, so we got with the school system, they were very supportive, and got that shut down. So anybody who's coming from the junior high to the park is Boys and Girls Club. So...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us down to somebody in our staff. I think we got it pretty well. No, well, we're still, we're working on staff.
Staff question?
Yeah.
Why the dull gray and red for an emergency ambulance? You can't see the thing at night. I mean, I was on a fire department years ago, but we never saw one of the dull gray or dull red.
That's the new, new style for the state of Jordan Lawdern, going to that route. And we're still, we're still got the white ones with the red stripes, but this is the new paint scheme that everybody's coming up with, such as the new sheriff cars and all of these paint schemes that are happening to them.
It's all about the lights, not the side.
Uh-huh.
It's all about the lights, as far as warning lights, that's what you're concerned about. The LEDs are a lot brighter now than the old Hallington lights.
Okay. All right. Well, that brings us down to item number two on the 2019 L-MeG. We've got a list of the proposed L-MeG for 2019. Wow. Two million, three hundred, three thousand for today.
Is that just material, huh?
Yeah. What they've got down here so far, because it, you're looking at a total of thirty miles with thirty, near thirty and a half miles with tonnage of thirty thousand fifty-six with a total of just a trickle of two million, three hundred, three thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars and ten cents. That's just asphalt. How many roads is that, Johnny? I can count them on here.
I thought it was around twenty-nine.
What do you anticipate we will get in this year?
Just in the road?
Yeah.
Slightly over two.
Yeah, it's been going up. How much has the tonnage increased, price per ton since last fall?
I don't know since last fall, but it's gone three times since January. It went up, sixteenth of July, it jumped three dollars and forty cents a ton, it went flat.
So now what's, what's the price for asphalt now?
Seventy dollars and fifty-five cents a ton.
Wow. I'm looking at forty-two roads on this list here, of course, this is preliminary. Kim, have you looked at all the roads to the fact any piping and all needs to be replaced and needs?
Yes, sir, there is some. We're gonna have to replace some brandies, five, there's some issue.
All right, I need to, if y'all don't mind, should kinda review this, look it over. We'll have to get with Ms. Harvey on the financials, see exactly. Asphalt keeps coming, I might have to cut back on some of these coming here, but how much you think?
Is the list balanced?
Yeah, on how, we've tried to prioritize them for the last four years, on what was alligator backing and coming all apart, and no, them that didn't have any base or whatever, that were actually county owned at this time. The, we'll just have to take a, take a look at, 'cause how much, how much you think we're going with L-MeG from state?
Five hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
Yeah, that's all we got. And we did, we get about five thirty last year, wasn't it?
Well, we got about five fifty. We get, we already netted an extra twelve thousand dollars this year, which, at these prices, it won't even cover the increase in asphalt.
No, no.
What's their, what's about their profit, their margin?
The way the bids have been going, they figure any work is ten to twelve dollars a ton for their profit, because they're buying them from CW Matthews just like we do.
Yeah.
And they say they don't get it cut range. I don't know. I mean, when we ask them, they say, no, we have paid what you do, that's all I know.
Okay. All right. Y'all got any, I know y'all were looking at some individual roads yourselves on adding and subtracting from what the list here's got. This is what Mr. Nicholson and Ken and Rodney and Phil have put together for this coming year, just something to look at, and...
Does the difference in that money, if we did all of that, does that come out of the splosh?
Part of it will come out, part of it will be that five hundred dollars I brought from L-MeG, but it puts it under, puts it under state guidelines, which means you've got to have certain specifications on roads that are already paid to resurf, this is just resurfacing money here. The, then the rest of it will come out of, come out of splosh. But you still got, since you got federal money or state involved in it, you gotta meet state guidelines on that particular funding. And...
You said this.
Yeah, y'all please take that and kinda go through it. And I don't have my, Kim, Kim's easy to get ahold of, Johnny's easy to get ahold of. Y'all got any questions, contact them, 'cause we've got, we've got some time to go over these. But you just gotta remember, these particular, anything that has to do with L-MeG or any state or federal funded, you've got guidelines you gotta, you gotta go by, and you can't just put state money on, on certain roads. All right. We have got a, item number three is Bethany Moore's subdivision. We got anybody here from Bethany Moore's? Okay. You guys are on the agenda. Who's your, who's your speaker? Who wants to be your speaker?
I can be, I don't know.
Anybody, with all the group here from Bethany Moore's, anybody got a problem with him being your speaker? Please introduce yourself and stand up.
Yeah, I'm Paul Horton, living Bethany Moore's, and brought it up, I don't know, two months ago about trying to get a solution for our road with over a hundred and forty residents in our subdivision, trying to get our roads taken care of, and a solution figured out for the benefit of everyone, so...
All right. We have, give all you sitting here a heads up, this is probably our third meeting we've had on Bethany Moore's over the years. We've met with certain citizens of that area. In the meantime, some of this that Mr. Landen was gonna tell y'all is something that we've talked to the past on this certain item, so, and please, y'all are on the agenda, if you've got questions, please ask, but I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Landen at this time to tell you what, what we can do and what we can partner with you to make this happen, but it's gotta be a partnership. So, Mr. Landen?
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Ms. Horton and I talked about a good deal of this over the past couple of weeks, but there are really two issues. One is the ownership of the roads, and then the other is the condition of the roads. As far as the ownership of the roads, the county has to have some sort of ownership interest in them before they can spend county money and use county equipment on those roads. And so there would need to be some sort of determination as to who owns those roads, and then how do we convey those to the county, and once the county gets in a position where they're willing to accept it. And for that, we'll probably need to hire a good real estate attorney to search the title to the roads. My suspicion is they're probably vested in a, in a, in a company that has been administered, that has been dissolved for some reason or another, but I can't confirm that. So that brings us to, so that's the first issue, is the ownership of the roads, and I think to resolve that, you'll have to have a real estate attorney search the title to the roads and determine who has the ability to actually convey those to the county once the county gets in a position to accept them. And that leads us to the second part of the problem, and that is the condition of the roads. As you, as all of y'all know, the county has, will not accept the roads until they are up to their standards, and it's gonna take some money to get those roads up to those standards. What some other subdivisions in your area, in your predicament have done, is use a homeowners' association to levy assessments that are used to pay the county for what the county says it's gonna cost to get it up to speed. I mean, the county's not making any money on it, but this is just for their, what it would cost them to do. Y'all, it's my understanding that this subdivision does not have a functioning homeowners' association, so that's not really an option for you. One of the things Mr. Horton and I've talked about and some of the others with the commissioners is this idea of a special taxing district. Pickens County has not done this before, but it is available to us, and the Board of Commissioners, by resolution, can establish a special taxing district, and I would've figured this would just be, the boundaries of this district would be the boundaries of the subdivision. And they would, in addition to the taxes that you norm, that everybody in the county pays, the people in this special district would pay an additional tax that could only be used in that special district. And so whatever that figure is that you're paying in addition, it cannot be used elsewhere in the county, it must only be used in that district, and it would only be used to pay the roads. And then once the roads get to, once there's enough money in that pot generated to where the county or whoever the contractor is, if y'all didn't want to use the county, to get the roads to the standards that where the county would accept them after inspection, then the, that special taxing assessment would, could go, should go away, could go away.
If, can I interject something here? The lawsuit that we've been trying to figure out, a little bit, what does that do with the special taxing district if, and most, most of y'all understand the lawsuit that happened back during Frank Martin's administration or... If, and most, most of y'all understand the lawsuit that happened back during, uh, Frank Martin's administration or Biden's administration, where the subdivision sued the city and, uh, the city lost the case under the fact that once that property, no matter where, touches any portion of the city of Jasper's, that property automatically goes into the city as city property, on account of your sewer system that's there. What happens to a special taxing district if that was ever happened? I mean, uh, does the city take over that taxing process from that point, or?
Well, I don't, I'm, I'm not really sure about that, but that is, that is one of the issues that the, the subdivision owners need to think about. And that is, um, this, it's highly likely that this property will be annexed into the city in, in the very near future. You have, uh, some commercial development on contiguous parcels to you, and that will, you know, and they're going to cause for the need for sewer with what they're doing there, more than likely. So when that happens, you then are, are the city's child, and we really, the county really doesn't have the authority to, to deal with something in the incorporated boundaries of the city. The city attorney and I would have, if, if we went through the process of establishing a special taxing district, um, the city attorney and I would have to have a clear understanding as to what would happen if that annexation happened prior to enough money being built for the roads to be included. And I think that whatever agreement we would have, it should be, we should, it should be a simple thing to have it to where it could be assigned to the city and the city agrees to assess that assignment, um, if that annexation occurred, but I can't speak for the city. That would be a conversation that Mr. Pickett and I would need to have about that.
Kind of like an, like, get the city to honor the same kind of deal?
Yeah, but, but from your standpoint, you, the county, the county's collecting money from you to do some, to do a certain thing. And if, and if once you're annexed in, the county's not going to be able to do that certain thing, and it's not fair for the county to keep that money that is collected for that purpose. And I think there should be a, something there, a vehicle or some sort where it goes to the city and the city can sort of put their money.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Richard Wright, uh, I understand there's taxes that are due, uh, somebody owns a road and they owe, is that the county or the city? They owe the taxes to, and whoever it is, if you know the taxes are due, that should give you a pretty good idea of who owns the roads, and you could go after them. Somebody needs to go after them. If the taxes are due, go get the taxes and see how much money you're talking about.
The issue you got during when all this thing fell through was the fact that a lot of people, a lot of companies were bankrupt. The, uh, if, if the county or the, uh, the tax assessor's office or the, or the tax collector takes over those county roads, it's kind of like, it's kind of like them taking over a house that hadn't had taxes, uh, paid on it. So if the county tax assessor goes in there and takes over a, a house because it hadn't paid its back taxes, there's nothing in the state law that says that the county can't go, cannot go in there and refurbish the house.
But, to, to your point, though.
Yeah.
But that tax bill may give, and, and evidence of ownership, that's not a title search, though. The, the tax assessor's office is not required to do a title search, they're taking a return from, from whoever owned it at that time. And that may have changed since that last return. The tax assessor is, is allowed and the law tells them to tax it in.
Because my point is, somebody owes the city or the county money.
They do, they do owe the county money, but that is not going to be anywhere near what's required to pay.
No, my point, my point is that if somebody owes the county or the city money, tax money, and if anybody else was in that predicament, I think y'all would go after them, or the city would go after them to try to collect that money. And I don't see that happening in this case. You're not even looking to see who owns the roads.
Well, let, let me make this point to you, the county is not going to sell, is not going to sell these roads at a tax sale. They're not going to do that. And for two reasons, number one, that, a tax deed does not give possessory rights to that property. Even if, if, if we do that tax sale and nobody bids on it, there's going to be a tax deed into the county, which then circumvents what their rules are as far as how a, a road comes into our system. It must be up to certain standards before we take it into our system. But in a tax, but if we do acquire it through a tax sale, we still have no possessory rights, we still don't have the right to put county equipment on it. Y'all, but y'all will need to establish who owns that, and there will need to be a, a conveyance into the county for the first part of this problem to, to be solved. The second part of it, the money side of it, is what I'm trying to talk to you about. And that's where I'm talking about a special taxing district. The logistics of a special taxing district do not require there to be any vote. The Board of Commissioners themselves can by resolution establish that special taxing district. I'm not going to speak, I can't speak for the board, but I don't think they would be in favor of just unilaterally imposing additional taxes on residents without any input from them. And so one of the things the commissioner and I, the chairman and I have talked about is, um, a petition. And I know that y'all have, y'all circulated petitions before.
Yeah, you said tax.
But, but, no, not for this issue, but a petition from a, a majority of the homeowners or whatever the board here decides, presented that says, yes, we would like for you to impose a special taxing district just to pave, to pave our roads. Then they might consider that as, as the basis for the resolution that, that puts a special taxing district in place. Now, before, if I'm in your shoes, before I sign off on that, I don't know how much money we're talking about. And I, I think if the Board of Commissioners directed our road department, they, not today, but through, after a period of time, they could give an estimate as to what that cost would be. Now, that is only an estimate, it is not a hard budget, as you well know, um, as you just heard when we were talking about the LME bids, the, the great fluctuation of asphalt costs, so. But we can tell you what it would be based on today's costs, and you'd at least know a ballpark figure as to what you're signing off on, which, if I'm in your shoes, that's what I'd want to know before I agree to those taxes.
I'm kind of curious as to why it's gotten to this point. Was there not a bond put up when the subdivision was started?
I, I can answer for that, I, I.
Well, somebody's got to have an answer.
I believe that the sub, the developer chose to keep those private roads, like Dick Penny does, like dentree does, like several other developers have done over the years. And when they do that, there's no, there is, the county has no rights.
So there is no answer, I mean, the answer is, there was no bond?
Because none was required, because the developer indicated.
Okay, so we know that for fact.
The developer indicated that, that they were private roads.
We know that for fact, though.
I, I know of no bond. I know of no bond in the, in the county's fault for these roads.
Okay, number two, you've got roads that were put in, somebody inspected those roads.
No, they didn't, these were private roads, county does not.
So they're not required to inspect the road, even though the city put their stuff underneath them?
The county does not inspect private roads.
That sure sounds like something that needs to be changed, I mean, that just.
Well, we don't have the right to go in there.
Well, this was, you know, twenty years ago, this was three, I mean, you've been in office sixteen years.
I've been in office, uh, so. Twenty-five.
And it was two commissioners before.
There were permits taken out on the housing, so.
Yeah.
How is the county not involved if they had to pull a permit for the housing on a private street?
You can build a house on a private road.
Yeah, but.
But that's, that's.
I understand that, but the county, the county's involved then because there's a permit taken out.
You can, you can build a house on a dirt road if you want to.
Right.
And the, and the county don't inspect the dirt road.
No.
So, but it's, but it's a private, but it does inspect the house, but it's a private, private road.
Okay.
The other thing to know about a special taxing district is the county can issue debt associated with that district. That does require voter approval of the taxpayer in that special district. Again, I can't speak for the Board of Commissioners, but in my dealings with them, they are not in favor of issuing debt for, um, for, for many things, and I think this might be a, a situation where that would not be issued. If, but the roads would not be accepted into the county, the roads would not be, um, improved until the, the pot of money that was collected per the special tax assessment was built up enough to, to deal with those expenses.
Yes, ma'am.
Shouldn't the homeowners, well, before they had bought in the subdivision, been aware of the road system for the, the, I, we've been there eleven years, we found out about it.
About a month or two ago.
A few months ago.
Your, your real estate agent and your closing attorney should have, should have.
Well, I, I bet, I bet no one in here.
This bought a year ago.
Yeah, yeah, I bet no one in here.
No disclosure.
No disclosure, nothing.
Well, so don't deed either.
Pardon?
If I, any deeds.
No, it's not, we would.
I just, I just wonder if, if we put some, since our, the roads are private, uh, if we put a bulletin board up on the front entrance of the three roads going into the subdivision, saying something like, ask your Realtor who owns these roads. Then what people are going to have when you go to sell your house, or somebody that's going to have a Realtor that goes in there with a customer, they're going to ask that question. And you're going to have a lot of people that say, I'm not going to buy in Bethany Mornings, and people are not going to be able to sell in Bethany Mornings. It's going to, it's going to put a halt on everything in Bethany Mornings.
Our, our role, the, the Board of Commissioner's role is not to address the past, um, inequities. That would be something to do, to deal with in a court. What the Board of Commissioners is offering to use is a solution to go forward with.
How long would that take?
I don't know, I think, I think before we could answer that, we would want Kim and his department to give us an estimate as to what, how much it would cost.
Can we do one of two things right now? Can you tell us who the developer was initially?
Jasper Land and Development. And the plaque does show that the county did sign off on, and RHOA that was put into place was not set up, that was not e- ever in the code.
Only thing the county could have signed off on back then was stolen erosion plan.
On that, on that plaque that I provided for y'all, they, on the side, it's chef inspected by engineers and, uh, Lee Newton in oh-four and everything like. I just don't, I guess that doesn't matter, but it's filed at the courthouse, and that's what they're selling these properties and.
Sold erosion plan would have been done two miles from Val, anytime any grading over one acre is done, and they probably did have its own up some over the subdivision. Rodney, is that pretty well correct on that one, you were here back then? So that was done as a sold erosion plan?
Sold erosion, just, just for runoff.
Can, can you ask them to, to start the process of getting an estimate about this?
Sure.
You know, we can say that's going to have to be the first step, and, but we haven't done the first step yet. We need to know how much it's going to cost to bring the roads up.
No, the first step, the larger thing is we got to find out who owns the roads.
So we can get.
And we got a real estate attorney, he just said.
And how, and it.
He just said that.
It's two, two steps, who owns it, and then how to, how, how can it be conveyed to? How can it be conveyed to?
I'm going to find that out when there's back taxes of over only ten thousand dollars owed on these roads.
Right.
That's who owns the roads, is who y'all are taxing.
That's a very well made.
Well, we know it is, we got the press report.
I know his name, that's.
We know his name.
And he's worth a lot of money, but it's like, what's he going to do? It's LL LP.
We're going to sue him, are y'all going to, I mean, what with it? Do we go after that owner?
No, it's Stephen R. Ben is the guy that owns it. He owns basic communities, he's, he still lives in Georgia, but.
Shemonti Dean area, nobody, you have to sue?
Stephen R. Ben, B-E-N.
What's in your?
B, yeah, B is important. It's, it's SRB, it's the LL LP, but it stands for Stephen R. Ben. They're, they're a big, you know, they're worth good money. They, they just bought them the courthouse steps after the plaque was signed off on and approved in oh-four. They bought it off the courthouse steps in April of that same year, four months later. And then it just.
Started them off, but there's always construction, there's already construction going in Bethany Mornings before oh-four, that's correct.
No, that's, that, oh-four was the first one. Now they tried, now the lawsuit was in oh-one to get them to approve the sewer and stuff.
That's when, that's when Mark Moore sued the city on the, on the sewer.
But they didn't build till oh-four. And that's when that plaque was, with the engineer and everybody on it, was oh-four, not before that.
So what you're saying is, we can get the estimate from you, and we can figure all this, if we have a special tax on it, nobody going to buy it anyway, so we don't have to worry about that, because they're not going to buy the house. But what we're saying is with you, is we don't, we, we have to get back where you were saying, who owns the roads. So let's get back to that, because we're not, we can't approve, y'all can't put a tax on us until you know who owns the roads.
Well, technically, they can put a tax if they choose to, but they're not, I don't think they would unless you petitioned and asked them to do so.
Even, even if we don't know who owns the roads?
Yeah.
Okay, what?
But, but I don't think they, as a fact, I don't think they would. So, but find a, a good real estate attorney to search those, those road beds to tell you who owns it. And then from that point, you'll know what needs to be done to convey them. Is, is it in SRB and is SRB still?
Yeah, that's a, they've been sued and stuff.
Have they been dissolved or, or what, you know?
I think they're at four or five.
Yeah, I think they're at.
It kind of went back and forth, and they tried to say roads weren't included in the sale, I got all the deeds back and forth.
Um, but the other thing to talk about, about the amount of the special taxes, I mean, it, it may be that, I don't know how many homeowners there, don't know what the estimate would be, but that math may work out to be, you know, fifty dollars a house, it may be.
That'd be good to know.
But I think, I think y'all wouldn't even want to know that before you sign off on the special taxing district. That would be a part of the proposal of, of, that the county would probably be willing to, to engage you with. It's like, you know, based on this estimate, we would, we would assess at this, um, at this miller rate, which would, which would work out to be, you know, roughly this amount for this value of a home, or this value of a lot, that sort of thing. Again, a lot of that is, um, none of that is definitive, because we don't know what the cost of asphalt is going to be when we get around to paying it, but it's the best we can do, at least then you'll have an idea.
But does the roads got to be in the homeowner's names, or, or that won't have a role?
And you just, that would depend on the, I, I wouldn't worry about that, I would, I would worry about getting a, finding a good real estate attorney to do a title search on it. And then let him and I talk about how we can get those, you know, based upon his search, how do we get them conveyed to the county? The county's not going to accept them though, for a few, you know, until there's enough money built up for the, for the rest. But at least you would know, at least you have a plan at that point.
This may be beyond your knowledge, but, uh, is, is it your understanding that a closing attorney that we all had should have done some kind of a title search on the roads?
No, I'm not.
And to let us know in full disclosure that.
I'm not saying that at all, I'm saying that.
I'm just giving, is that your opinion?
No, I'm not giving that opinion.
Okay, well.
What I'm saying is for our purposes, be- before you would want us to do a special taxing district, you're going to want to know if we're going to be able to use that money on these roads. And I can't answer that question until we know who owns it, and that's, that's what I think I would do.
But none of you know the story, aware of, there was no disclosure.
I just wonder how many of us would have bought in that subdivision?
Again, we're.
And you know what we know now?
This board is not going, is not here to address the, the passing, if, if they're passing equities at any, well, that would be in a court. But we're here to help you going forward, that's, that's all we can find.
Well, let's get the estimate on the, the roads.
I think.
Because that, that'll.
Are you going to be, we, we get these together, do you want us to forward the estimates to you?
I mean, that's fine, I, I, I make sure I share everything I find out from.
I think, you know, maybe, maybe once we have the estimate from Kim, maybe put it back on the board section again, so y'all get a conversation about what amount, you know, what, have Roy in here to help us figure it with the miller rates and stuff about. Okay, this is going to cost two hundred thousand dollars to fix these roads, or you want to collect that over a two-year time period, a ten-year time period? Well, you know, and then what's that, and what's that, what's that equation?
It won't matter to me.
What's going to be the impact for each home at that time?
And then the whole time this is going on, asphalt, as you discussed earlier, is going up and up and up and up and up, so that, so that.
Your anger is going to deteriorate in that time.
It's got to be broke here somewhere.
Will that allow us to have a budget there for some maintenance before you pay?
Like if, say, like if a big thing gets washed out on some of the hills and.
I would say what would probably have to happen if we get everything worked out is your base would have to come up to standards, which is six inches of base, get rolled in, you'd have, then you'd have two inches of binder with the, with the sealer on top.
I was talking about any maintenance before, including any maintenance. There's a lot of hot holes in that on the street right now, and they're terrible, you know, they, they might collapse, you know? There's, there's one that just messed up the water main for the water department, so we might start having some issues really soon.
We'll answer that until we see what the type of, what your title search is.
I was saying, if we got to wait ten years with roads.
That's, that's what I'm saying, let, but, let the folks that are involved in this come back and tell the Board of Commissioners, we don't want to wait ten years. We would rather pay it at this higher miller rate, get it done in two years and move on, rather than like, spread this paint out for ten or fifteen years and it just gets worse and worse as it goes along, asphalt, so. I, I think if we could get it done, it'd be better off yard, but it's, y'all are the ones paying the taxes, I'll be, it's easy, that's easy for me to say on.
But as soon as that's done, where the county, there'll be county roads, does that work yourself?
So, yeah.
After this tax is all done, we finally, would be county road after that? After this tax is all done, we finally, would be county road after that? I mean.
Yeah, that's, that would be the goal or, or a city depending on the annexation issue. That would be the goal.
You mentioned the city annexation. Does that mean, you said, looks like in the near future? What is the near future to you?
I'm just saying that looking, looking at the tax parcels that you're contiguous to, some of them bore 515, some of them bore some other commercial development that is, and you see activity when you drive by there.
Right, but your own words just a few minutes ago, you foresee that happening in the near future. Everybody heard that. What is the near future to you?
I, I don't have a, I don't have.
There has to be a definition.
I don't have a definition and I'm going to give you a public meeting as to when I think those are going to be annexed. I'll tell you that right.
Are we going to have any say in being sucked into the city of Jasper? Would be a call on that or?
Probably not. By the court order, that was listed back in, back when the court, when the, when the judge made the ruling, no, you won't have any say, the way, the way we read it.
Just want their money for taxes.
Pardon?
They would just want their money for city taxes.
And that doesn't mean they'd even take roads even if they did.
That's right.
They're not obligated. They're going to have the same issue that we have as far as, as far as they've been private ownership.
Well, that's saying you take county road after all this money's done and they come in. Will the county sign a vote?
That's what I was telling you. Mr. Horton is not right with the county to collect this money from you for this purpose and then not, and then not use it for that purpose because of the legal event of the annexation to the city. And so we would want to make sure that we have an agreement with the city so that y'all can get the benefit of what you're paying.
Well, people in the city pay county taxes too. So if that, how?
I'm just, I'm talking about your, your, you need special tax that you're paying just for your roads. It would go to the county, but if the county's not legally able to pay your roads in the fall of the annexation, there needs to be, there needs to be an assurance that it will go to the next jurisdiction and they will use it for that purpose.
So I, if, if, I'm having a hard time understanding this is that if the city put sewer and water under streets, they're going to require so much above that. Somebody had to inspect them. They're going, they're, they're going to require there's so much base put above their material.
I don't know if they will or not. I don't know what the city's requirements are for what water and sewer installation.
Well, I might understand then if the city does annex us, we're back in the same situation. Now the city is going to say, well, the streets aren't up to standards, so we're not going to do anything with the streets. We'll just take care of the rest of everything, you know, water management.
I can't speak for the city.
We couldn't have that city in that.
Another question, somebody already mentioned runoff. Who's responsible for the runoff of these streets for the rainwater?
I don't have an answer for that either.
I mean, I, I lose, I lost a foot of property just in this last rain, just because they, they put a pipe there and dumped multi-streets of water next to my house.
I mean, that, that's a, I mean, that's a complicated legal question that depends, that's very fact specific. And I don't have the facts to answer that for. I don't, I don't think this is the form to answer that.
Okay.
Wouldn't it be wise for this county to put a, whatever their, mortuary man, that if the roads are not up standard, they need to stop allowing building, they don't know? Or in this type of situation, we came through ownership or some, you know, something out there that could protect the future homeowners until this is all happening there?
I think, I think there is a question about do we want to ever allow private roads in subdivisions? I mean, I think that's, I think that's, I think that's a legitimate question to ask the governing authority as, as part of the learning curve in this. But you've got to realize that this was done 20 years ago. This is, this has gone on before any of these folks even thought about it.
We got people reselling their homes now, correct?
I think, I think the issue you guys, if, if I may, is the fact that if, if somebody, if somebody wants to build a subdivision and wants the roads to be private, put in the gate of community, that's. That's them. The, I agree to the fact that the real estate agent or the, or the individual selling the property should let the individuals buying the property know who owns the roads. That should be part of, it's like having a buried fuel tank on your property. That has to be disclosed. So I, I'm curious on why the.
It's not even a deed.
Oh, the deed.
Deeds just contingent for, of the roads. That should be in the.
And I think, I think on ours that we do now, aren't the deeds showing, uh, aren't they specified private or public roads on, on some of the, when you do the.
I do a plaque work.
When they did the plaque work?
I have the plaque work for most of the mornings as public.
And the plaque work, I guess, is wrong.
A public road does not mean a canned road or a.
I know, but I'm saying that's what's getting us confused here.
Yeah, well, it could be, could be.
Now, we, we require them to stay on the plaque of our property maintained or county maintained. And we also require, one of the things I do is I have to review the, make sure there is a homeowners association set up legally. I mean, we don't approve, we don't look at the budgets and we don't make sure that it continues to stay up.
Right, is it, no, it is.
But we, we do make sure that there is that vehicle there for the homeowners to use if they need to.
Yeah, because I don't think they ever intended in that one. I think from everything I can find and look up in covenants that's filed at courthouse, they never intended for anybody to pay HOA there. They put some, some mild restrictions, but no.
I know the city, I know city sewer, city water, but how many other areas allow city water and city sewer on a private road without signature? I mean, it seems strange. You have public, you have public utilities on a private road.
It seems like somebody did.
But that's not unique.
And the city, and the city has got mortgages in place now that they will no longer put city sewer on somebody's property unless it's already annexed into the city. That, that's city thing now. Yes, sir.
What's a, Walt, since we don't have a homeowners association, what's a ballpark for lawyers to get the deeds and stuff for the roads?
To do the title search? You're talking about to do the title search?
Yeah.
Couple hundred dollars.
Oh, just a couple?
Probably, I, I don't, I mean, not much. It depends on the amount of work.
Whoever, whoever the subdivision wants to talk to, I'd probably get that.
Now, I'll say that there's, you know, you're asking what's going to cost search tile? But that doesn't, there may be repair work that's needed for the tiles.
In other words, we ask for a donation to get that money. What's our ballpark to get?
I think, I think, I think the first step is to, is to figure out who, an attorney to do that before you sit down with them and, and get a budget, you know, do the title search first. And if there's repair work, then we're going to come back and talk about what it costs for that repair work is going to be if any. But you've got to have the title search and know where you are. So start with that.
Well, you say do that and then we find out it's RAB or whatever those companies name,